...to dig holes, to put things in, to support things that go above the horizon. And we have to be very careful about certain things that are product that we produce and also in the way we go about producing it. And this is with great honor tonight, I have a proclamation.
I'd like to ask about good friend Randy Siders.
Yes. That is the FCO's director. And I'd like to present a proclamation. And this is something I think it applies to all of us because the result, if it's not done right, affects each and every one of us. This proclamation is the office of the mayor of City Pearland. Whereas each year, the nation's underground utility infrastructure is jeopardized by unintentional damage by those who fail to call 811. To have underground lines located prior to your digging. Undesired consequences such as service interruption, which happens, doesn't it? Damage to the environment and personal injury, and even death are the potential results of digging without knowing where you're digging. And whereas the Common Ground Alliance, at its seventeen hundred members, promote the national call before you dig 811 in an effort to reduce these damages. Designated by the FCC in two thousand and five, the number 811 provides potential excavators and homeowners a simple number to call to reach one call center, which is where you have to, where the call would go, to request utility line locations at the intended dig site. And whereas through education of safe digging practices, excavators and homeowners can save time and money keeping our nation safe and connected by making a simple call to 811 in advance of any digging of a project, waiting for the results and the amount of time required to do so, and respecting the marked lines by maintaining visual definition throughout the course of the excavation, and finally digging with care around whether the little signs are located, those identified where the danger is. Whereas all persons and parties agree that safe digging is a shared responsibility to no bus below call 811 before you dig. Now therefore, I, Tom Reed, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Pearland, do hereby proclaim the month of April National Safe Digging Month, and encourage all excavators, excavators and homeowners throughout the country to call 811 before digging because safe digging is no accident. It was given under my hand and sealed the office of mayor, and we appreciate your calling this to our attention because all, everyone will swallow a newspaper, there'll be an article about somebody dug and their phones are out, or somebody dug and also they hit a gas line, and that's some real problems. So I'd like to present this to you, and we'll take a picture, and I'll ask you to make a few comments regarding this one, Mr. Reed.
One more thing.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Perhaps you can make a few comments to help elucidate what I've just said.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say on behalf of Centerpoint Energy, I want to thank the mayor and the council for helping Centerpoint Energy get the word out there, partner in this. It is extremely important that we call before we dig. It's a free service to everyone. Just dial 811 and they'll take your information over the phone. They also have a convenient app now for smartphones. You can go on there. Need to call forty-eight hours in advance, we'll come out, mark the lines. If there's no conflict, they'll put no conflict out there. But again, it is extremely important for safety reasons and just for interruption of service out there.
Well, I mentioned this to our staff, and they're delighted that you requested this proclamation, and we were, by the same delight, we're glad to be able to present it because these are the people become damaged, hurt, and affected by somebody digging where they shouldn't be digging, when it's so simple and it's so satisfying. Thank you for being here, and I appreciate you whatever you're asking.
Thank you very much.
Monday, April the 10th, two thousand and seventeen. If you'll please rise, we'll have an invocation right by Councilmember Gary Moore, our mayor pro temp, and our police chief Chris Dahl will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please bear with me, I'm a little under the weather, so if you would, please bow your head with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here today. We ask you for your wisdom in our decision-making tonight, as we do every day. We ask that you watch over our men and women in the military, our first responders, and that you keep them safe. We also ask that you take care of each and every one of us here tonight, and you watch over us on our way home, and get us home safely. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and respected by our pledge of allegiance treaty, Texas, one state, under God, one being visible.
Wow. Got a full house.
I tell you, it's great to see so many people in the audience today. It's, we put a number of seats here, hoping they'd be filled occasionally, and sometimes there are, and sometimes there are not. So thank each one of you for being here. We do have a rather lengthy agenda, but it takes care of the business that we are required to prepare for you, and we believe that the results will be, one, that you will agree is acceptable and agreeable. So let me go into the agenda. Item one, and incidentally, I have the same agenda that you have, and I'll be reading from the same agenda in the order in which it's posted. First thing that's called to order, of course, I have all of the city council members present here tonight. And item two. Item two on the agendas is the invocation, pledge of allegiance, which we just completed. Roll call of our council here. Moving to new business, to item four, which is citizen comments. If you have not done so and would like to make a comment, would you please fill out one of these? Because this portion of our agenda is not posted, which has to be posted seventy-two hours before we meet. And what this does, that accommodates your being able to make a presentation. And if you do want to speak, and I do have several, please come to the podium, give us your name and your address, and please focus on the issue, realizing that there are others who would like to make a presentation behind you. So I'll call upon you by name in just a few minutes. And with that information in the record. And I'm going to start with these in the order in which I received them. And we'll have some people talking about generalized things, and there are a couple of people who want to talk about, I believe, item four on our agenda. That'll, we'll bring that forward when we get that part in our council agenda. Nancy, thank you for being here tonight. Stand up close to the mic so we can all hear you.
My voice carries fairly well.
I can hear you from here. I can hear you from here. Thank you.
My name is Nancy Zumalt. I live at eleven four oh four Terra Place, Pearland, Texas, seven seven five eight four. It is in the South Gate subdivision. What I am concerned about and why I came today was that we've had some problems with criminal activity in our Pearland Park that is in our subdivision. It's being used by, really, I would say criminals. There's a drug activity that goes on at night, probably some in the daytime, and it is, we have people that have said that they have seen drug dealing in the park. What I'm concerned about is that the park is used by families, by young children, by adults, by youth, and by senior citizens, of which I am. I enjoy walking, and we have a walking path, and every now and then I use a bike, and it's getting where I really am a little concerned about my safety in going to the park. We would like to have lights and cameras put in this park by the city so that possibly, hopefully, it would cut down on the criminal activity. Maybe they'd think twice before they came to our park, because right now, there are no lights there and no cameras. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate your comments. Dahlia Kessib? Yes, there. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, councilman. Thank you, everyone. So I just wanted to make a comment. It has been amazing to watch our powerful community come together for tonight's resolution. When the people lead the government, this is a wonderful thing. A great American, Frederick Douglass, once said, "Power concedes nothing without a demand." The ability to enforce a real work stoppage, or perhaps even revoke the permit at Blue Ridge is a demand that deserves serious consideration. I have spoken to over one thousand residents since February, most of them in the area affected by the landfill. I think you are familiar with their economic and environmental concerns by this evening. However, these environmental policies affect us all in the end, east or west. We have a great tradition of renewability here in Pearland that we should also consider taking to the next level. Keep Pearland Beautiful has diverted a few major sources of landfill trash, but how do we build real participation in these programs in time to conserve our environment? In late March, Keep Pearland Beautiful issued orange bags for new textile recycling programs, but hardly anyone I know is aware of what to do with the materials. By devoting real civic participation to certain programs and demanding zero waste in the city of Pearland, any landfill, new or old, would take a lot longer to fill up. I hope we can continue to allow the people to lead. Thank you for your consideration of this resolution.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you so much. Appreciate, thank you. A request from Carolyn Legg. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate you.
My name is Carolyn Legg, and I live at one one four oh one Carson Avenue in the South Gate community in Pearland. I currently serve on the board of directors for our community, and I came to this meeting to address our concerns with the city park located in our subdivision. Thanks to the city, we have a nice park, and we love it. But we have, unfortunately, we have several reasons that our park attracts unlawful activities. One of the reasons, I'm assuming, is because it's within walking distance of the Pearland Town Center, also within walking distance of the Shadow Creek Ranch High School, and we see teenagers and young adults hanging out in the park at all hours. And our board has requested last year that a sign be posted in the park telling the park hours, but so far, that sign has not been put up. Our concern is the activity that goes on in the park when the sun goes down. Due to the fact that the park is dark, it encourages young people to gather there and do what they want to do without being seen or possibly arrested. One adjacent homeowner to the park has told me, and he was gonna try to make it to the meeting tonight, but his plane landed at five o'clock at Intercontinental from Hong Kong, and I think you'll be at your next meeting. But he has pictures, his house backs up to the park, and he has a camera there, and he has pictures of activities that take place in the park, and he's willing to share those with the city council. And the pictures he has are pictures that you can actually read license plates on, close-ups, see faces, and there are suspected drug dealings in the park, and suspected use of drugs in the park, and also pictures of sex acts in the park. A city of Pearland police officer lives, lived in South Gate recently, and he parked his car every day on the street in front of the house, because it's in our subdivision, we have a restriction that you're not supposed to do that, so he came and asked us, could he do it? And we said, sure, we'd love for a police car to be out on the street where they could see it. But seeing a police car near the park on a regular basis did not keep suspected illegal activities from happening in the park. In February of this year, at our monthly board meeting, our general meeting, we had a lady Pearland police officer come to our monthly meeting, and she was encouraging us to install cameras at our four, we only have four entrances to our neighborhood, in order to help the Pearland police solve illegal activities and crime in our community. She also brought a representative from a surveillance company, I have the name at home, to talk about the cameras. As a homeowner in South Gate and a taxpayer, I'm requesting that the city of Pearland install lighting in our park, or the city park, to discourage these unlawful and bad things from happening near our homes at night. I'm also requesting they install cameras in the park, so that the cameras can help the city police solve these activities of crimes in our neighborhood. Due to the recent break-in on Harris Street in our neighborhood, which was on the local and national news, as you all know, the getaway car for these guys was waiting in the park. If we want to keep our park out of the news, then we need to have safety features turned on twenty-four hours a day. We need lights, we need cameras, and we need action. And that's why I'm here tonight, is to request action from you, our city council members. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And one last requester here, Ms. Medlock. There she is. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, city councilman. I stand before you tonight with a heavy heart after witnessing on television today what happened in San Bernardino, San Bernardino, California, with the shooting at the elementary school, which brought me back to our plight in Laxas, Savannah, and I apologize, I forgot to say where I'm from. So I'm at one four one oh six Spring No Lane, Roschere, Texas, which is in Laxas, Savannah community. Several of us came before you at the last city council meeting with our plight for attention to our fire station, for the slow response time that we receive in our community. This just added to what we were already, what we were already going through when we, when I witnessed this news, newscast today, and saw the innocent children, and I got to thinking, well, what would happen? What would be the end result if that happened in our community, as we do have two schools that are affected by our fire station or lack thereof? So I stand before you tonight, once again, to plead with each of you to help us come up with a solution for our fire station. At the end of construction, we will have approximately thirty-six hundred homes in the Laxas, Savannah community. So we're not a rural entity, we're not in the middle of nowhere with cows and chickens and all of that. We are a community with families, with children, with two schools, Savannah Lakes Elementary and Don Jeter Elementary. We need your assistance. We're not asking you to, to solve the problem, we're asking you to help us find a solution, whether that be to allow Fire Chief Riley to, to relax some of the stringent, the very stringent requirements you have for volunteer firefighters, so that we can have some volunteers to man our fire station. But we need your help. So I appeal to each and every one of you, if you have a family, if you have children, imagine what we feel with the fear that we have every day if we should have to call Pearland EMS, or heaven forbid, if our house is on fire. And I have experienced that, not here where I live currently, but when I was growing up, I actually did live in a rural area, and I did have to stand and watch my house burn down. So I know what that feels like. So again, I appeal to you on behalf, I don't know if we have, how many Laxas, Savannah residents we have here tonight, but I appeal to you on behalf of the residents of Laxas, Savannah, please help us. Please help us come up with a solution for our fire station situation. We need your help, and we're asking for your help. Thank you for your time.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I believe it's time in our agenda for a little recognition, and if you look behind you, about in the middle of the center grouping, the chairs are young men in the uniforms, and they're scouts, two four sixty-four here in Pearland. And they're here to try to take their constructive steps towards obtaining their Eagle badge, and have to do that by making, obtaining merit badges and various tests of sorts. And so they're here for probably several, several of those, and I'd like for you to stand up. Would you ask the two to stand up? Being an Eagle Scout, the first, first question I ask of them is, anybody there ready for an Eagle Scout badge yet? And there's one of them, hand went up, another sort of went up. So we're, these are Eagle Scouts in the making, right here. So you are right here in the beginning. These are the guys that eventually will be running our country. And I think it's important that we have young men, and young women as well, in a scouting movement, because that teaches us so much of the basics of citizenship and, and management of our time in order to work with others, and preparing themselves for being a quality senior, a senior in, in high school and graduate on end to being an adult. And this is, this is the road to becoming an adult, and I just want y'all to recognize them tonight, and thank you for bringing them in. Looking forward to joining your next Eagle Scout Court of Honor. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Mayor.
And also, we, we do have an election coming up, and I thought it'd be appropriate to, for those of you who may or may not know all of the candidates, you know, Pearland is, this is something we've always done here in Pearland, and one of the things we always do is, we always invoke the aid of deity when we come in, regardless of what your religion is. We have to be, evoke the aid of deity to guide us in the process of governing our community. We also pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and of our state. And not all, I understand, not all cities across the world, the state of America does that, but we do. But we also have something we call elections, and we do have several, something like about thirteen, I believe, candidates on the ballot this, this year. And one of the, one of the, one of the particular candidate positions is position number seven. We had, for a long time, we had five, five council members, and we felt like as we grew that we needed to expand our, our council base, and last year, we had our first council member, position number six on the ballot, and he came in, Trent Perez down on my far left. And this year, we have position number seven. And if you look up here and see how many seats we've got, I think if we get number seven here, well, city manager's gonna lose his place at the table here, it looks like. But we're in the process of renovating the city hall and probably the city council chamber here, so maybe there'll be another seat down there in, in the mix, so we'll see how that works out. I'd like to ask individuals, starting with, with those in position seven that may be here, to, if you are here, to stand up and introduce yourself. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Sherri Stockwell.
Thank you so much. Ladies, ladies first.
My name is Delia Kessib, and I'm running for position seven for, and I'm a resident of Shadow Creek Ranch.
Woody Owens, I'm running for position seven.
I'm Terry Gray, I'm also running for position seven.
Okay, anyone else here for position seven? Okay, we have a position five coming up. Is there anyone here for position five? And that position would replace our senior council member, Greg Hill, who is, will be running for county court of law judge in the election coming up next year, I believe. And he'll introduce himself. If that one of you should introduce yourself, since you could be this place to run for that.
Yeah, not to, not to confuse the issue, since we have the mayor and council races, but my race will be coming up in the March Republican primary next year, the gubernatorial cycle. So I'm hoping to be the first ever, I think, the first ever judge on the county court of law bench from Pearland. We've never in history, it was where a county had somebody from Pearland represent any of the county courts of law, so this would be nice. It looks good so far, I'm unposed.
Number three next year. Okay. And I believe you have, yeah. We also have position number three that's open. Would you, any candidate for position three?
My name's Kerry Moore, I'm up for reelection for position three. I appreciate your support and your vote. Thank you.
That leaves the position for mayor, and I see a good friend down there, Quentin Wilks. Hi, Quentin.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Quentin Wilks, and I'm asking for the opportunity, as Mayor Reed has done for so many years, to provide leadership and guidance for this city for years to come. I've got great admiration for Mayor Reed, and I've followed him since the ten years that I've been here, and he has been a definite inspiration for me, so would definitely appreciate your support and your vote. Thank you, Mayor Reed, for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, thank you. I am Tom Reed, and I'm building a city, and I'm not through building it yet. I don't know of any other individuals here tonight that, does anybody here think of, or qualify for being especially recognized? Give me your hand up. Why don't we move now in our agenda to the consent agenda? Are there any items to be removed from consent agenda, which consists of items A through And did you have any items to be removed from consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, item E.
B?
E.
E, is it easy?
Like Edward, yes.
Okay, easy, okay. Let me, let me give you a background on the consent agenda. About, I'd say about ten years ago, the council had lengthy agendas that took us into midnight a lot, and there were several council members here before that, that were here, like councilman Terry Gray and Woody Owens and others that are running again now for position, and also Larry Maricot sitting at the back there, which is a longtime council member. We, we looked at our council agenda, and there were a lot of items that just flamed up. What, you know, so what we did, we passed a, on a ballot, a request for the citizens to approve us to do what is called a consent agenda. And the consent agenda consists of those items like the minutes and other things. And the consent agenda consists of those items like the minutes and other things that are items that, that really don't rise to the level of, of any discussion. And, but the council has the right to pull one off of their consent agenda and we will handle it as a regular item. So, and it did pass close to ninety-two percent of citizens at that point. It has been a great help to us because we have something like seven of them here today. At one, one, one council meeting, we had something like twenty-five of them. So, it would have, we'd been here all night working our way through that. So, with that information in your pockets, that just to bring you up to date on issues that we face here as, as elected officials, we do have a...
Mayor, can I, can we, yes, sir, item C, please. C is in Charlie.
The items, items E and C?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item C and E, okay. Councilmember Carbone, would you present the agenda with the exception of C and E?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through F with the exclusion of C and E. So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We are in discussion and the items from council, we'd like to have a discussion. Eric Dunn, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Consent agenda A through F with the exception of C and E, passed with six to zero.
Moving to item number C on our agenda, Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution R twenty seventeen dash sixty-nine, a resolution approving the purchase of a restroom building through the T A S B buy board from Restroom Facilities Limited. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second. We're in discussion. Staff report on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Item C is part of forthcoming improvements at Independence Park just to the south of us here that quite exciting. It's involves a lot of soils work and trying to improve access with roads, but also there's new restrooms that are part of the plan. This is an independent buy off the state buy board as indicated there. We're buying these prepackaged prefab units. They're quite nice, actually. Then we hook them up with required water and sewer and so there'll be a fixture there. But this allows us to get going and preorder those and be in a position for the entire improvement to be available when we're scheduled to do that.
Okay. Council have any question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Just had a couple of questions with respect to the utilities for, to serve this. Since the budget is only for the building, are we being preemptive with the utilities to drag them out there or they, or do they already exist? Is the, is the restroom going to be able to, or are there connections available to it already?
The existing restroom out there, I believe, is on a grinder pump, but the park expansion that will be bidding here very shortly will include extension of the utilities to serve this new restroom.
So, we're going to do the, we're going to do the utilities, drag it over there preemptively so in five months they'll have something to connect or we'll sit there and then wait until the utilities come through?
I believe that our utility work is going to coincide with the restroom showing up.
Okay.
Do you have a question or comment from council? Eric Dunn, we do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty-nine is approved six to zero.
That information in the record. Let's move to item E on our collective agenda. Councilmember Carbone, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, excuse the absent, absence of Councilmember Derek Reed from the regular council meeting held on March twenty seventeen. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second and I don't know if the staff reported on that, but does council have any comments on this item?
I was, I was here.
Yeah, you were here.
Very much so, here.
Where were you hiding out?
On the twenty-seventh, I was here. Now, maybe it was, maybe it's a typo and it should have been the twentieth, which we had a JPH and a regular meeting at five-thirty around the twenty-seventh. But did we have on our last agenda, excuse me, from the twentieth?
No.
Did we have on our last agenda though?
No.
Excuse me?
Would you make a motion to amend it to, to your present?
Mayor, I might amend this to excuse Councilmember Reed.
For the, for the meeting on March twentieth?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion second. We approve that. We have amendment to the motion. Would you favor that amendment, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Any further comment on the amended motion? We do have, we have, do have an amended motion on the table for your cons...
Mr. Amend and strike out the...
Yep, yep. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed six to zero.
Okay. Moving in our agenda to, and I have the same agenda you have, I recall, moving to new business item number one. Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R twenty seventeen dash six-eight. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second. We're in discussion. We do have a request from Edward Mears to, regarding this item. Would you like me, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Edward Mears, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, Moss Lake Lane, Pearland, west side of Pearland. I'm here to speak upon the new business item, item four-one, consideration for the resolution to petition TCQ to suspend the permit at Blue Ridge landfill. I want to thank you and the council for your service, for you guys' continued service for our community and for all my fellow Boy Scouts back there. You'll get your eagle if you work on it. Citizenship in the community is important. Your community needs leaders. You'll always find that. So, step up and take the opportunity, stand up for what's right. I also want to thank the city for participating in our house. Our representative, Ed Thompson, had a, has a bill before the state legislature and the city spoke forward, spoke for and in favor of the, of that resolution, which is to put a moratorium on new landfills. Intention is to bring to light some of the deficiencies in permitting and regulation of our landfills and we appreciate the city's position to support that legislation. I also support the city's effort here tonight. If you guys move forward with this or at least discussion on a resolution to petition landfill to, or to petition TCQ to sus, to suspend the permit at Blue Ridge. As we've seen by Blue Ridge and their recent response to the agreed order, they continue to deny that they're in violation of TCQ's well-documented notices of enforcement and violations at the landfill. At the same time, they claim to be investing in infrastructure to improve the air quality, but as we observed this past weekend, again, we were hit with the, what TCQ describes as offensively nuisance odor. So, we continue to ask you guys, continue to press the Blue Ridge landfill operations to become in compliance. It's going to take our efforts along with the coordinated efforts with our state legislature to get there and we appreciate your support.
Good.
Thank you.
I appreciate those comments and thank you so much. We had both our city manager and our city attorney working this issue. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item that council requested that, actually Mr. Coker drafted. Also give credit, appreciate their resident comments, but staff has been monitoring and bird dogging this issue continuously. Mr. Brans, Mr. Epperson, Lori Fitzgerald, a lot of people have been spending a lot of hours on staff trying to motivate and, and document for TCQ to, to regulate this facility that has been identified as a source of the nuisance orders, odors that have impacted the large part of the community. So, the resolution's been drafted for your consideration. We know TCQ has responded actually to some prior requests along these lines, but probably still appropriate for council to put this into the record and, you know, you never know when that might be reopened and revisited by TCQ.
You need to add anything to that from the city secretary, city attorney position? Okay, very good. Council have any question or comment on this item? It's, it's all objecting work to some degree and, but we're making some progress on that.
I'd just like to make a brief statement.
Would you like to make a comment on this?
As an environmental manager for over twenty years, I understand the long-term effects on landfills and the mismanagement of landfills. Again, excuse me, I'm under the weather so I'm grateful to have an organization like Keep Pearland Beautiful in our city. Not only that, but to have a recycle center at the status of what we have for the size of our city. Our recycle center is one of the top-notch recycle centers in not only the state, but surrounding states. We take more items at the recycle center than any, than a lot of other recycle centers. By doing that, we help keep those things that don't belong in the landfill out, i.e. old refrigerators and stoves, the compressors from Alacel refrigerators that hold Freon, paints, paint-related material, many things like that. But I do want to let everybody know, the city does not use Republic Services, which owns and operates Blue Ridge landfill in the city of Fresno, in Fort Bend County. We are contracted through waste management and all of our stuff that we do send to landfills goes to waste management landfills. And the recycle center is, most of their stuff, well, all of their stuff cannot go to landfill, so it is all managed through waste management also.
I appreciate it. Any other comments from council at this point? Reed?
Just, just want to say thanks to Darren for drawing this up and to John and the rest of staff for, you know, continuously being involved in this effort since the beginning of last year, actually towards the end of twenty fifteen, I think it was. So, I want to commend everybody for, for, you know, for where we've gotten to this far or at this point and hopefully we see some, some results from this.
Kind of a unique situation that the landfill is not in, not in Pearland at all, not in Brazoria County at all. It's in another county, which is Fort Bend County. So, it's, it becomes quite a challenge and it's way over yonder, but it affects us way over here. And that's a lot of what our environmental issues sometimes do and...
But, but I do think it's important, Mayor, because it's our residents that are affected by this even though it's not in our city or even our county. So, as, as council and staff, we're doing as much as we can to get resolution to this situation. So, hopefully we can, we can push this with the help of State Rep Thompson and we can get this resolved.
Yeah. I know you spent a lot of time on that issue as well as Councilmember Perez and a number of us, rest of us, so we, it's, it becomes personal at twelve and we had to work it. So, council have any further discussion or comment?
Yes, Mayor. Just real quick, I want to thank all the citizens who've been involved and the ones that, that have been involved in the task force and encourage them to continue to let us know when they're experiencing these odor issues as we've, as we've talked on the task force. By y'all notifying the city and y'all notifying TCQ that these issues are ongoing, it lets us know that whatever resolution that Blue Ridge has put in place has not yet been resolved. As was alluded to before, TCQ, TCQ had, has already preemptively issued a response to a citizens letter to suspend the permit and has already stated that that's not, that's not something they're considering at this time. But I don't want that to minimize the resolve that this council has with this resolution that we're trying to, or that we're, we're going to, I expect that we're going to pass today. We are all, and we've all had several conversations about this. We are all very committed to getting this, getting this resolved. Every single one of us has spent time discussing this with citizens. Every single one of us has spent time trying to find a new path, a new avenue and we have a council member that has to live with this on a regular basis and he informs us of what he's experiencing. So, it is a slower process than we, than we want, but we're, we're pushing forward and I think progress is being made, just not as quickly as we like. So, regardless of what happens from this resolution, regardless of what happens within the next few weeks, be patient and I, I'm confident we're going to get there.
I think that's true and I, I really appreciate the citizens out there, it's the miers and others that are, have worked with us and tried to figure out how to, the solution and I think we're making progress. I think we're making progress. Thank you. Any other question or comment from council at this point? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Wait just a second till he seats. Sorry. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Reed?
Of course, yes, without a doubt.
Councilmember Moore?
Absolutely, hundred percent.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty-eight was adopted six to zero.
Moving in our agenda to item number, which is council in put in discussion regarding the master drainage plan phase one presentation, I'll let staff report.
Thank you, sir. The first part of this is the city commissioned Half and Associates to work up a master drainage plan for the entire city. We've had a variety of, of individual studies over the years. So, a big chunk of this work was to consolidate and document all those and bring those into one format that we could use. I also want to give thanks and credit and recognition for Brazoria County Drainage District Number Four, led by Mike Yost, his staff there. They are full partners in this endeavor. And wrote the, the pricing this and have worked with us and the consultants on this report. So, I'd like to ask Robert Upton to, our city engineer, say a few words and then he'll have Half make their presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, as City Manager Pearson said, is that this is a culmination of first phase of many phases where we're looking forward to continuing to map out our city and Brazoria County Drainage District Number Four's service area and work together and have a great partnership. So, I'm going to have Terry Barr with Half and Associates come up and give a brief presentation associated with where we are to date at the completion of phase one. And then also for your consideration that you have for item three is dealing with the next phase or phase two, which is taking the information that we have gathered and therefore starting to run models on it and see what improvements that'll lead towards a capital improvement program for drainage throughout the area in partnership with BDD Four. And so, I'd like to turn it over to Terry right now and do that and then if there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
All right. Good evening. My name is Terry Barr. I'm with Half Associates. I am the project manager for the master drainage plan update for the city of Pearland and Brazoria D D Four. I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to update you on what we've done thus far with phase one and then to discuss a little bit about what we're going to be doing moving forward on phase two, pending your approval, of course. The master drainage plan study is a combination of the city of Pearland's limits as well as the Brazoria D D Four limits. It encompasses about ninety-seven square miles. The study is going to include all your major tributaries, Hickory Slough, Mary's Creek, Cowart Creek, as well as Mustang and Chalka Bayou. Clear Creek is included in the study, however, because that model is developed and maintained by Harris County Flood Control District, that is not going to be remodeled, however, will be considered as we're looking at projects throughout the, the system. The purpose of the master drainage plan update really is to conduct a multi-phase update of the existing drainage plans. There are currently two plans, one for Brazoria D D Four, which is dated about ninety-seven, one for the city of Pearland, which is nineteen ninety-eight. These have been utilized for about the last twenty years. The focus of our master plan update is really on the open channel drainage system. So, as Robert alluded to, it's a two-phase with the first phase being heavily data collection and data evaluation as well as significant field investigation work and then a review of all that and recommendations moving forward into phase two. Phase two itself is really kind of the, the bulk of it where we're going to be updating both the existing or baseline conditions modeling. We're going to be looking at the existing flood hazards and then we're going to be looking at various projects that we can evaluate and recommend for the capital improvement program. I want to... I want to clarify, the, while the study is focused on the open channel system, some of the recommendations are probably going to be along the lines of future studies for some of the small local drainage areas. We realize that some of the drainage problems are not necessarily a function of the open channel system themselves, that being the bayou and the ditches. However, we really need to get a good handle on what is the situation in the bayou and ditches, what improvements can be made there, and then how can that positively impact the drainage network, such that when we go look at the smaller systems, you know, later on down the line, basically, the tub can drain because the drain is adequate. So our, our Phase One approach really is these first three items, which is the data and model collection and inventory, the data analysis and field reconnaissance, and then our Phase One recommendations. This is kind of where we are on the scale, and you'll, you'll see as we progress through kind of where we are versus where we're going. Now, the data inventory helps us accomplish one of the goals, which is to move toward a more digital environment. And what it is, is basically a, literally a digital record of every plan, set, and report that was provided to us, and it's all organized in a database and connected G I S features, such that anybody who has access to the database can get ahold of any one of these reports. It's a searchable database. It makes finding documents easier, such that, you know, if, instead of going and trying to find whatever report you're looking for, all of it's here contained in a database. It is intended to be updatable, so that as additional development occurs or additional, you know, projects are built, that can be entered into this database and tracked, and hopefully this database will grow as the city grows. It's also web map, excuse me, web map accessible. As part of this project, we did develop a project web map, and the data is available Another significant portion of Phase One was the evaluation of all these documents and models. We looked at about 110 different documents, including the existing master plans, several subregional plans that have been done, all the way down to small drainage reports. So we've been through quite a bit of information, trying to pick out, you know, what's important, what's changed, what can we use moving forward. We've also looked at all the available modeling that was done for the major streams, including Clear Creek, Hickory Slough, Mary's Creek, and others. Another big piece of Phase One was what we called the field verification, which is essentially us going out into the field and getting our eyes on as much of the drainage infrastructure as possible. We conducted, we conducted a pretty substantial effort. All the data was gathered using our digital field tools. So we have a database that has all the physical locations of all the data points. We looked at bridges, culverts, detention ponds, storm outfalls, channel sections, anything you can imagine that's drainage-related, and photographed and took notes for each and every one of these features, which are uploaded into the digital database. And so this database was provided to the staff as part of the final report. Basically, you can go in, click on any one of these points, and have the photos and all the notes associated with it at any time, if you can access the database. And this information will be used as we start doing the modeling in Phase Two. We also delivered a significant amount of G I S as part of the Phase One report. So we've updated all the bayou and ditch locations, updated the drainage areas, and provided the major watershed information, provided detention pond locations, regional ponds, updated the 100 and 500-year floodplains for Clear Creek, and then we're providing that data inventory and the field data inventory that we just talked about to you as part of that. So that's a significant amount of data, and it, hopefully, we'll continue to update that as we move through Phase Two. One of the things we provided was an updated bayou and ditch network. This helps us to identify what streams are in what watersheds and to kind of develop a hierarchy of streams as we go into the planning process, so we know which streams are major, which streams are tributaries, which streams are tributaries of tributaries, and it helps us with what types of modeling need to be done and what types of projects can be done on those streams. We also provided major watersheds information. You can see that all the watersheds on the eastern side, including Hickory, Mary's, Cowart, Chigger, are all tributaries of Clear Creek, so they're all kind of colored together, which is a significant portion of the area. But we're also looking at Mustang, and then Chalka Bayou, the West Fork and the Mainstem were a small portion. We also provided information about regional detention ponds. The city has about 13 regional detention ponds used for a variety of things, including flood reduction and development mitigation. So we will continue to track those, see what kind of, you know, volumes have been used, what volume is available, and hopefully carry this forward as new ponds are built as part of the implementation of the, of the master drainage plan. So after going through all this data, it's a pretty extensive review, we've come up with kind of a few categories of recommendations, and then some specific points that go with each of them. First of these is, we hope to move toward a digital environment, and that is to utilize and expand the existing data inventory, to incorporate the Phase Two modeling as well as any, you know, new modeling, FEMA modeling, into a model inventory, very similar to the data where it's connected to G I S, and then consider implementation of a model management system to keep track of what's being done as projects come in and things get designed and built, and the modeling changes with it, to make sure that that information can be kept up with. And also, as we move into the actual plan recommendations, to consider digital fact sheets with a G I S feature associated, such that those are easily accessible as well. We hope to implement traditional and non-traditional approaches, leveraging technology and our, and our modeling expertise to bring in some of the new technologies. You know, your, your standard steady-state modeling is great in some situations, but there are situations with, you know, complex hydraulics and overflow situations that might bear a little bit more detailed modeling. To consider multi-use facilities and green approaches, instead of just detention or just channel, to consider looking at multi-use facilities and, and green infrastructure. And then to prioritize projects using different categories, other than just, you know, big projects, benefit cost, stack them in a row, and I'll talk about that in just a second. And also to improve Pearland B D D Four coordination, and that's not to say that coordination doesn't exist, quite the contrary, but really, this is just an effort to make sure that both B D Four and the city have the same information that's being continuously updated, and there are policies in place to help that communication facilitate that. So as we finish up Phase One, which is the red, we move into Phase Two, which is kind of the, the bulk of the planning process. So we're going to be updating the base model and looking at future conditions hydrology, analyzing various hazards, flood hazards, both existing and potential, and then looking at what projects can be implemented and prioritizing them for implementation in the C I P. Basic tasks, visiting and public, visioning and public outreach, this is basically a communication effort both internally and externally. We want to involve departments within the city, but we also want to involve the public, get their input, let them know what's going on. Some additional data collection, really, the bulk of it is your, your baseline conditions modeling update, and then looking at flood reduction alternatives, and then your implementation side, which is looking at costs, benefits, and how to prioritize those. Baseline conditions modeling, we have a couple of different things we're going to be doing. One is, we're going to be updating those models that are in pretty good shape. Hickory Slough, Mary's Creek, and Cowart Creek all have models that are relatively recent, within the last 10 years or so. We will be updating them based on the new terrain data sets or more recent terrain information, but generally speaking, the models are in, you know, pretty good shape, so we don't want to reinvent the wheel by throwing all that out. There are some bayous, such as Mustang and Chalka Bayou and Chigger Creek, where the modeling is much more dated, and it's our plan to go in and develop some new modeling for that. And then also, capacity analysis for smaller ditches. We have, of course, these major streams, but there's also a lot of smaller ditches, and while we can't necessarily go do a bunch of modeling on those, we can get an idea of what their capacity is, and possibly look at some improvements that are on a much smaller scale, so that, you know, we can address some of those local issues, even if some of the bigger projects, you know, are on the horizon, they, they may be 10, 20 years down the road, so if we can address some of these smaller issues, there's some benefit there as well. Improvement alternatives, we're going to look at traditional improvement alternatives, such as detention and retention, as well as conveyance and volume improvements, but we also want to consider multi-use facilities. You know, how can we, how can we use detention facilities and, and get parks at the same time, or linear greenways, how can we get conveyance improvements and trails at the same time? Those are all things that are on the table. We also want to look at green infrastructure, and as I mentioned to earlier, to you guys earlier, what are some additional studies that can be done for local areas, some of the smaller drainage problems that aren't necessarily bayou or ditch related? One of the things that we see with a lot of drainage master plans is that all the projects are prioritized in the same category, so some of your smaller projects don't necessarily make that list because they're not big, they're not expensive, they don't have a big widespread benefit. But if we can break these down into different categories and prioritize them as such, then you can capture and, and handle some of these smaller O and M projects or small C I Ps, while at the same time looking to address some of your larger projects as well. So just consideration of different types of projects, I think, can provide a benefit to the plan. So once Phase Two is complete, then we start to get into the implementation. This is kind of where the end of Phase Two is and, and the future begins. So we've, we've laid out the plan, scheduled it all out, and now we start to go to the implementation phase, where, you know, projects get scheduled, things get built, things start to change and move, and so as part of that, ongoing assistance, you know, whether it's us or, or other engineering firms, hopefully us, can help you to, you know, continue to update this plan as things change, as, as development occurs, as projects get built, as funding sources change. So that's, that's all part of a continuing cycle. As far as implementation, we want this to be a, a living document. You know, this is something that's going to move and change, it's not a static environment, we don't want the plan to be static either. Certainly, the traditional report is part of this, but a big part of it is the, the digital deliverables. What can we do to, to give you information that's easily accessible, not, not just to you and other agencies, but if you so choose, the public? That data is out there for them as well. So part of that is the G I S data deliverables that we talked about, the data and model inventories, and then when we get to that point, the actual locations and fact sheets regarding each of the C I P projects, what the project is, what, how much we think it's going to cost, when should it be scheduled, and that sort of thing. All that information, it will be provided as part of Phase Two, and in fact, some of it, quite a bit of it, has been developed as part of Phase One. So with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions, but you know, Pearland and most of the cities in the Gulf Coast here have a unique condition for, when you're talking about drainage. Pearland sits at 55 feet elevation, zero is Gallaston, of course, and everything flows downhill. And all the land west of us is also higher than it is here, it's just sort of a gradual upswing, and I'm not sure in Fort Bend County where it's maybe even instead of 55 feet, but maybe, maybe, maybe close to 60 feet. And what that does, water flows downhill. And we have a number of arterials in there, like Clear Creek and Mary's Creek, and, and the bayous, and, and Cowart's Creek, and I think we counted nine of them a while ago. And each one of those has a, a watershed, which feeds into it, and actually, the headwaters of Clear Creek starts in Fort Bend County, right across 521, about half a mile up, where some drainage ditches and things converge on a spot, and it, and it has created the, the headwaters of Clear Creek, which is a monster during drainage because of the huge drainage area that we have, and, and it's all downhill. So it's, it's a challenge for all of us to try to work with the, what Mother Nature's put down for us, and, and try to make it kind of work with us a little bit. And I think that this, this addresses a number of the, of the, the types of questions we need to ask, the types of studies we need to look at, and I think that, it wasn't too many years ago, I was chairman of Drainage District Four, and we had this particular issue back in those days as well, only we didn't have any understanding about all the rest of the tributaries and, and the skills and information that you have today here. So I think, I think it's a good presentation. I know the council will have some, those with more engineering, stronger engineering background will probably have more input for us at this point, or questions.
I would like to add one, one item to it as well, is that Terry's been working on with us as part of Phase One, is an area that's on wagon trail, and that area that has shown some repetitive areas of flooding. Part of Phase One is that we had them look at that area, and so we've gone into design, we're at 60% design stage right now, doing that review on those plans for paving of the streets, but then also having a full-blown storm sewer system that will discharge out and collect water, too, to help alleviate some of that issues that we've been hearing about, and also been discussing with our residents and our business owners on a regular basis. So it's being done, we're at 60%, we're in review of that, hopefully in about the next two to three months, if I recall correctly, we'll be out on the street.
When we talk about engineering subjects, I have a, I have a go-to guy, Trent Epperson. And he's not here, he's over there, but Trent Perez would probably suit for him.
I think Councilmember Hill had one thing he wanted to say first, so I'll start with him.
Just, real quick, on the wagon trail, that was going to be one of my questions. So the construction, then, at least based on the packet, shows that it should be done around February of next year, complete. Is that accurate, or should?
If everything goes according to plan, that is correct. That is where we're headed, where we'll be out in the street in the next couple of months for, for bid, and then turn it loose.
Okay. I'm glad we're doing that, because that's, I mean, that's a huge issue, as you know, especially with the recent rains, and, so, anyway, that's good.
Yeah, thank you for putting, putting that up on the front of the list.
Just, I'm, I'm taking a look at the milestone progress schedule that we put out just a couple of weeks ago, and that's scheduled right now, as, as Robert said, to start bids here, June timeframe, award around August, and then we've got about a year of construction, so maybe about summer of '18 for that project.
So it's a year, not six months of construction?
That's what we have right here. It's probably somewhere in between that.
Okay.
Longest is a year.
All right.
But regardless, thank y'all for putting that on, on the front end there. I know it's going to be a lot of work, and it's a, it's a time thing because of the amount of work that needs to be done, but thank you, because that area is pretty bad. My other area that I know is coming up on the C I P, but it's the old townsite area, specifically like Gallaston and Walnut.
Yes, sir.
What timeframe are we looking on in that?
That's actually running about the same timeframe. We've received plans in, and we're in that stage of review, same time they're on that 60%. Am I correct? On Rob Ross?
60%.
We've submit, we've submitted, so we're in the 90, we're, we're getting reviews for 90% comments coming back. We sent 60% off, so they're incorporating that and moving forward, so then our goal is probably right around that June, July, summer timeframe for that under construction as well.
Okay, great, thank y'all.
And not, not to get too far off, of course, here, but what about some of the businesses at Walnut? Have we, is that on the plan at all? Have we looked at that?
You can help me out on that one.
I believe that's the project we were just...
Right, that was...
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right, good, good. Okay. I was talking to Trent, I didn't hear, sorry about that. All right, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, sorry, I will, I will next time.
It's mine. Thanks. Man. So a couple of things I, I want to cover. One, I appreciate staff, Robert, I really appreciate your diligence on this. I think this is something that we, we definitely need to do. We've had some studies in the past that have been an attempt at comprehensive studies, but then they just get washed over as development comes over. I, I love the idea of it being a living document. I think that what I would like to see is it actually become a living document. We have control of editable models as development comes in, particularly along the creeks, that we can update those models with the new development, the new, the new flow, we can identify problems as they come, and then that we have a regular schedule of when this, when these, or when this report gets updated, when those models get updated, when we come back and reevaluate and see what information is still valid, what we got right, what we got wrong. It's hydraulic, so it's largely a statistical guessing game. We can never tell in any given day or any given year how much rain is going to fall. And we wished it was, there was more science to it, but it's more statistical models. So I think it's imperative that what we develop is something that we can possess here, we can edit here in, in minor forms, that we have the staff, the resources to potentially edit that, be it a Hecras model, or H M S model, or Storm Cat, or whatever we're going to use, and that we regularly, we regularly input into those models as development comes through. A couple of things that, Robert, I know you and I have talked about this, kind of probably ad nauseam even before you were on staff here, is the, the fallacy of, of a lot of these drainage plans is that we deal with the overall conveyance, the regional conveyance, which is the channels, and then we never, we never really take a good hard look at how we're going to get the 100-year event into it. To borrow your, your tub analogy, the tub doesn't drain if the, if the drain won't go all the way up, and what we've done with criteria is to allow it to be cheaper for us and cheaper for the, for development, we allow for three-year conveyance, but we require 100-year detention, but we never really get a good look at how the 100-year gets in there. And with us being as flat as it is, it really requires a lot more attention than has been paid. When I design, I design all my storm sewer to convey the 100-year, pressurize it with the H G L up to the gutter line. the HGL up to the gutter line. I'd like us, probably not appropriate for phase one or two of this project, but potentially as a phase three, take a look at what it may need to take for us to identify areas where 100-year conveyance and certain particularly developed areas is just not getting there to prevent some of the localized flooding. That's exactly what's happening in wagon trail. It's not the conveyance of the regional system, it's the conveyance, or it's not the conveyance of the channel, it's the conveyance of the storm sewer that leads to the channel. 20, 30, 40 years ago, it was probably plenty fine, as it silts in and as our rainfall becomes more intense, you know, these three-year models that we're using are just not sufficient. So I'd like us to, I'd really like us to take a hard look after we've identified the problems in the channels, to identify the problems in the storm sewer systems, and start taking a look at, and I know this is outside of the scope of this, but as we talk about updates to the criteria manual, be more diligent about requiring conveyance of the 100-year, or requiring proof that the conveyance can get there. Be more diligent about making sure that our detention ponds have criteria that covers the emergency overflow, so when they do back up, we have two events on top of each other before the pond, that when that pond overcapacitates, that its drainings weren't someplace safe as opposed to in the neighborhood behind it. A problem that our newer development doesn't have, but our older development does. You know, tying in that, and you make sure we have clear HGL and EGL standards when we go into that. Again, outside of the scope of what we're doing for phase one or phase two, but certainly something that I think needs to be dovetailed into the backend of this report. You know, there is a fallacy in the static state models that we do for our detention ponds on the small end. I don't think that there's a way that we're going to get around that without requiring dynamic modeling, which nobody is going to want to pay for. We'll stipend development by doing that, but, you know, be conscious of the fact that it's a flawed way of looking at it. So, you know, potentially some recommendations of what we need to do regionally to accept those flaws and plan accordingly for what's downstream of them. You know, we talk a lot about regional detention, and in that, you know, I'd love to see us, and again, Robert, something you and I have talked about, Trent, you and I have talked about this for a while, about having a more, a more dynamic regional detention plan, but the problem is we can't get there without the conveyance. So if I hadn't hit the hammer on the nail enough, we've got to find something on that backend to where we're going to, where we make all these channel improvements, which is fantastic for everybody who abuts the channel and can sheet flow the channel, but means absolutely nothing to everybody who's choked off to it. So if we can think through how we're going to incorporate that in this update model, how we're going to incorporate that in our criteria manual changes, I think that would get us to the point where we can avoid a Linwood, we can avoid a Orange Street, we can avoid putting in these storm sewer systems that are brand-new and still not working, that don't truly address the problem, because we're not giving our consultants the necessary encouragement to look beyond just the three-year event. But thank y'all for all you're doing. I think this is an extraordinarily important component to what we're doing as a city, and I know it's somewhat boring to most other people, but it's as important a component as anything we do up here. So thank y'all.
Just one other quick thing. Could you give us an update on the Linwood? I know y'all met with some of the residents out there last week or so, but unfortunately I wasn't able to make it. So if you could update us on Linwood real quick?
Sure. Give you status on that. We did have a public meeting with Linwood and the residents there, Linwood, Orange, and Old Alvin, and it went very well. Since that time, we finalized drawings, and the project is actually out on the street for bid. We had our pre-bid meeting last week. We should be expecting bids back, not this week, but next week if I recall the schedule correctly, but don't hold me to that. And, but it's already set in stone on when that is, and so questions and final comments from contractors are due, and we'll evaluate those and see if an addendum's needed, but then we'll be back before you in the coming months for award of that contract.
So one, just one other question. Excuse me. So when we get like, I think this last rainfall event we had, it was somewhere in a neighborhood of like 3.6 inches in like an hour and 10 minutes. Is all of this work that we're doing for the drainage, is it going to help when we get a rainfall event like that, or are we still going to be borderline flooding when we get three, four inches in an hour, hour and 15-minute timeframe?
I'll let Terry answer that question. He's my expert.
When we look at flood reduction alternatives, we typically try, one, to get, what is it going to take to get 100-year level of service in the channel, and then we also look at some smaller level of service, usually for cost purposes. A rainfall like that, depending on where it is, in this case, it was a very small, isolated area, this particular plan may not address if it is a very small area with undersized storm sewer. However, when I, when I talked a little bit earlier, if the drain, you know, if the ditches aren't adequate to handle the drainage, then it doesn't really matter what's going on in the neighborhood, it's not going to, it's not going to drain. So as part of this study, what we're going to look at is, what is it going to take to accommodate that in the ditches? Not just the big ditches, but also these smaller ditches that drain up into the neighborhood. So to some extent, we'll address that there, but we'll also look at sizing these ditches to handle some future improved condition within the neighborhoods, such that, you know, we're going to assume as with these channels, that their size properly, such that if all the neighborhoods and surrounding areas were improved, that it could accommodate that. The other thing we're looking at is, when we do the improved analysis and when we look at the revised existing, we can start to identify some of those areas that are flooding because of the bays and ditches, and to pinpoint some of those areas that are not. And those areas that are not flooding because of the bays and ditches, we'll recommend for additional study as part of our recommendations. So it's not just going to be projects, but it's also where else, where are we finding that the flooding is still occurring even though we're saying we've, you know, recommending some improvements? And then recommending those for studies, those are likely more of a local issue, and we can start to address those, but we have to identify them first. Some of it, public input is very important on that, so we know exactly where we're getting no drainage complaints, and then we'll put that against what we're seeing in our models and figure out, you know, what is causing the flooding, whether it be your open ditch and channels, or if it's more of a local issue. You know, if the ditch has capacity to receive the excess drainage and the neighborhood's improved, then that 3.6 inches in an hour can be handled.
Okay.
But, you know, that's a pretty high level of service. So again, there's a function of, you know, how much can we afford, and then, you know, how long is it going to take to get it all worked out? There's a lot of moving parts. You know, ideally, we would be able to plan the whole thing out and be fixed like that, but unfortunately, with resource limitations, that doesn't happen. But we're planning with that in mind, and we want to make sure that the drain has enough to handle that.
Following up on his question, you know, there ought to be some referral in the drainage plan to the part of the Bible that shows how the definition of dimensions of an arc, perhaps for catastrophic rains.
About to say, I'd like to follow up on that, Mayor, just to make sure everybody understands. I lived through the 79 in Alvin, which I think still holds a record in the United States. You know, there's some events, we're never going to throw enough money. Can it be done? Yes. The other thing I want to make sure people understand is, with that, I got about two inches in my yard during that rain, and I had probably two, two and a half inches of water in my backyard, at no fault of the cities, it was the way my backyard was done when my house was built. So, you know, you've also, that water has to get to public property before we can handle it. So I don't want people thinking that this is the save-all that's going to stop flooding in the Gulf Coast, because that's unfortunately, I don't think will ever happen in my lifetime. What I do want to say, staff, Drainage District Four, compared to what I grew up with in Pearland, we've done a great job. Overall, we have our problem areas, but overall, we have made improvements, and we don't have the problems that we had citywide in the late 70s, early 80s, even into the 90s. And I hope that we will continue to put money at this. I did like the little funding chart when we had reserve and M&amp;O. I'm not sure if y'all have looked at our budget, the money's not in either one of those. But if we put it there, yeah, let's get these smaller projects done with those funds. So thank y'all very much.
Cut it up to borrow a couple of points you made. There is, and something that I'm hoping that we're looking at, you know, what we are generally required to do in the NFIP, National Flood Insurance Rate Program, which is what drives a lot of our drainage criteria, is keep those insurance rates low, a big part of that national program, is to look at the 100-year event. 100-year event's based on statistically what have we seen. The problem we've seen over the last probably 20 years is that 100-year events are happening in about 10-year frequencies. Recently, with TESAR, Tropical Storm Allison Recovery Project, we remodeled the entire Gulf area, well, I'm sorry, the entire Harris County area, to make Tropical Storm Allison the 100-year event. Unfortunately, Brazoria County wasn't a participant in that. So we may not be working off of, if we're borrowing stuff from some of the drainage districts, we may not be working off of the most current information. Now, I don't know where you're getting your data. I don't know if you're trying to formulate directly from the rain gauges, or if you're trying to use statistical data, but we do need to be cautious of that, because it, we are, the rainfall is more intense over time, and it's been tracking that way for several decades. There's no reason to think that it's going to change, and you can have whatever, you can derive whatever conspiracy theory is associated with that, but those are the statistical facts. Our 100-year events don't happen every 100 years, and that's what we're supposed to participate in, that's what we're supposed to manage. As we continue to play from behind using 30-year-old models to predict what's going to happen in the next 10 years, we're going to always play from behind in that. So if we can find, I would like us to be aggressive. I would like us to, at least on the modeling, at least on the planning documents, be conservative about what we're determining as a 100-year event, 100-year 24-hour event. These flash events, the 100-year three, three-hour, the 100-year two-hour, stuff like that, you know, they'll flash, they'll go away, they'll have some localized ponding, that's the reality. But then when you're having a 100-year 24-hour event, and they're happening again every 10 or 20 years, and you're getting structural flooding loss, that's what we're, that's what we're, at least for me, that's what I'm focused on us preventing. Not gutter washers that rise into a front yard a little bit to where it's inconvenient, but that we are draining down and preventing structural flooding and preventing people from having to deal with, you know, water sitting in their front yard for days.
Congressman Carbone, you had a question on this item? Okay, more?
Just very brief, and then we can move on. I just want to thank Mr. Yost back here in the back from Drainage District Number Four for his work with us, and the city staff, and city staff work with Drainage District Number Four to get some of this, some of these projects not only done, but maintained as we go through time. So thank you very much.
Senator Hill, if you have a question? No, Mayor, I was, no, I'll, well, actually, if we could, the first slide that had like the 14 different detention facilities throughout, I just wanted to take a look at that. So it's Max Road Sports Complex, the small green one up there at the top in the north? You had talked about multi-use, and that's why it just made me wonder if that's already been included.
That's this one, that one up on Max Road.
Okay.
It's hiding there. It should be. Yes, I mean, that's part of the channel system. There'll be, that's part of the channel system, there'll be, that's used, and then also Hickory Slough. There's also, that detention basin is also uses a sports complex as well, where the soccer field's on that. So those are used as on-channel storage.
Yeah, well, just a comment, I think that that's a good plan to have these multi-use facilities double, or whatever that might be. So anyway, that's great. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? I think you did a good job for kickoff on this, and you'll be back to phase two, I guess, pretty soon.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Well, thank you for good work on that. Lady, you had any wrap-up comments?
On this, if council wishes, I don't believe we have a formal acceptance on phase one, but item three is the keeping this rolling and commissioning phase two with half, and again, in cooperation with BD Four for payment of that.
Very good. Is that good information? From two, let's move to item number three on our agenda, and Councilmember Moore, would you do the honors?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R2017-72, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
I have nothing to add, sir.
Okay. Council, have any questions or comments for staff at this point? We do have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Ordno?
Aye.
Mr. Britt?
Aye.
Mr. Carbone?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-72, that's 60.
Okay. Moving into our agenda to item number four in our agenda. Councilmember Ordno, would you present this for our consideration?
Consideration of possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-155, so moved.
Second.
Motion's second, and we're in discussion. We do have a request from Council, former Councilmember Larry Marcot. Thank you for being here tonight.
Larry Marcot, 3606 Inverness Court. I'm here to recommend you follow the P and Z and approve the zone change for the ultimate customer, I believe, is Biggie, which is a big crane company that you see around. I was in LA over New Year's, and they were everywhere, and I know they're here. I remember our company in California used them to move heavy engines, and I see them. Two of my neighbors work for them that live in my subdivision. They're a good company, and this was set in motion by mayor and council during my first term on council in 2000, 2003 of that property that we then were able to incorporate in our city. And part of the plan was, you've got Bass Pro, and you've got other businesses that have now formed, and going west, we go all the way to 521. Eventually, that's in our ETJ, and this just helps to expand that and help the mayor grow this city. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. Thank you very much. Staff report?
Oh, Lotta, present this, please.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Lotta.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So the property is currently zoned S5 and is located on Riley Road. The applicant is seeking to rezone it to M1. The applicant has purchased the property to the west of the site also, and is planning to incorporate this lot with the larger lot for their global crane services, crane rental, and other related facilities. And the staff is recommending in favor of this zone change. The site is approximately five acres. The proposed zoning of the property, which is M1, is not in conformance with the future land designation, but it is compatible with the existing development that has already taken place on site. And even though the scale and intensity of this development is not compatible with the character of the Spectrum District, that, as you can see, the buildings to the east side of the property are higher-quality development. However, this parcel and the adjoining parcel that's zoned M1 is located on the western boundary of S5, and it's similar in nature to the adjoining residential areas between this property and 521. As we go towards 521, the area gets more industrial in nature, so this would be more suitable for that. And the rezoning of this property will allow the owner to develop a cohesive development under one ownership, and will allow a unified industrial development to occur, and it'll also encourage reuse of an existing building on the site, and will help to build the building into... into conformance with current building codes and fire codes. And the parcel is surrounded by M1 zoning on two sides, so it is compatible to what's happening on the west side of the property. So, for those reasons, the staff recommends approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a positive, made a positive recommendation with a vote of six to zero. Thanks.
Appreciate those, appreciate those comments. Council, have any question or comment regarding this particular issue? I came back down from 521, come back from Houston, Greenway Plaza, and on 521, I got to Riley Road and came back through to connect with Kirby, and that's not a very good roadway in there. Is there any requirement that he needs to upgrade that, or what is the plan on that, you know? The quality of the road, Riley Road itself?
So, city has plans to improve Riley Road in the future, and I know that PEDC is working with the developers in that area, so there are plans in the future to upgrade that road.
Okay, okay, good, super. Council, have any question or comment on this item? I don't hear one. We have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Order number 2000M-155 was approved six to zero.
Okay, moving to Item Number Five on our collective agenda. Councilmember Hill, would you do the honor?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number 2017-59, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report?
Yes, sir. This is one of the projects I identified back in the 2007 bond issue for the community that is expanding and upgrades to the existing Tom Reed Library across the street here on Liberty. Went through a process and competitive sealed proposals, and recommending award to construction masters for the amount that's described here. From this point, we'd coordinate with the library staff on trying to minimize any closures as much as possible, but we'll have to be back to you and share what those timeframes would be like after we've had a chance to sit down with contractor.
Okay. I have a question regarding the parking lot just north of the parking lot for the library, and it's between the, if you notice, we put a, the city actually helped develop that parking lot with the idea that it would be a shared parking lot for overflow from the library. We have that during elections and sometimes high activity in the library, people looking for a place to park, and that is actually part of ours. I'd like to clarify, if we could, and maybe put a sign up there, you know, excess parking at that location. And as a matter of fact, we had a nice little step railing and step to lead down to that level for people that were knowledgeable about the availability of it. So, it's not that, maybe like to be, it's not the library itself, but it would be a place for the patrons of the library when it is overflowing.
Certainly take a look at that, Mayor, appreciate the heads up, so.
Okay, good, thank you. Check that out. Council, any question or comment on this item? Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. You kind of touched on the timing of the construction and the interruption. There's all kinds of rumors going on from the library, it'll be shut down for a year to everything else. So, I guess I'd ask, once we do figure out what that limited service interruption is, that we clearly communicate that to the library staff and the affected citizens.
Absolutely. Yeah, in the contract docs, we call for up to a year, but like I said, we're going to try to minimize that, and if, assuming this gets awarded, we'll be able to sit down with contractor and define that, and hear you, Lotta, and Claire will definitely communicate that, why.
So, when you say up to a year, people are going to hear that and say the library is going to be shut down for up to a year, but I understand it to be different. Can you give us a little bit more flavor?
I've asked for that, I haven't been able to pin anybody down too much on the trend, you can.
The construction contract lasted for a year. There's, of course, an expansion to the existing library, but the project, as it, as we waited over time to get to the project, there's more extensive internal renovations than probably were initially contemplated. So, we've been working with the library staff on all these, and they understand that there will be disruptions. We still need to work through the schedule with the contractor to pinpoint and minimize those disruptions, but we're not going to have it closed for 12 months. Robert, do you have anything more detailed?
While he's coming up, when will we be able to report back and define, is that two weeks, three weeks out? That might be, that might help.
I'll let Robert answer that, but we have been, you know, communicating with the library staff throughout this process of what to expect, and my expectation is they would continue to be in those meetings to hear firsthand what the plans are.
Yeah. Councilmember Carbone, we've actually been working with the library staff itself. We have a meeting and a presentation coming up with them in April. With that, though, my staff's been already talking with the contractor, and we're looking at a true close-down, probably in the neighborhood of about four to five months, and trying to keep the library open as long as possible, but that'll be defined more once the contracts are signed and we sit down to have a notice to proceed with them, and then develop a formal schedule that they'll be doing now upon award of tonight. But tentative right now, full closure would be looking somewhere in the neighborhood of five, four to five months.
Okay, and I'd ask.
I'm sorry. To add to that, I think, you know, what we're trying to do is minimize the closure, but at the same time not extend the construction period longer. So, there's, you know, we're trying to find that happy medium where we make the closure as short as possible, but the overall construction, you know, is not to drag it out extensively as well.
Okay. I guess I'd ask, as soon as we have that firmed up, if we can get that communicated out, and there's, I'm hearing all kinds of crazy things from the staff, the library staff, so if we can get that communicated and hopefully out to the citizens as well, I think that alleviates a lot of concerns.
Yes, sir, and that's one of our reasons to meeting with the library Board of Directors as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question or comment?
Yes, Mayor. One, I want to dovetail on what Councilmember Carbone said before I do that. I want to thank staff for putting everything in response to the questions we had about the award. We did get an email back from the contractor who was in protest, where they acknowledged that there was a mistake in what they had submitted, and that it wasn't, wasn't any unfairness in the award. I think the scoring system, we did. While everything needs improvement, I think it was as fair as it could be, so I appreciate all that y'all put in and the extra effort to make sure that those questions were responded to. On this, on this particular contract, what are we, what are we holding the contractors to with respect to a phasing plan? When do they, are they going to be able to deliver that so that we know what areas they're going to tackle first? We know.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, so to address that concern, exactly what sections that they're going to be able to, they're going to have to have shut down as they make, as they renovate the electrical connections, you know, they may have to have a weekend where there's no power to the building if they're updating the entire electrical system or plumbing system or something of that nature.
As stated earlier, upon award tonight, if all goes according that way, then from that standpoint, then we'll start with the negotiations with the contractor. He'll start putting his schedule together and get his approach. We have a tentative approach as part of the competitive sealed bid proposal, but this is to refine it even further. Where are you going to start specifically? We have some idea, but this is for him to set his subs out and go from there. From that standpoint, then we'll be able to convey and communicate to you and also the library staff what that phase is. Is it going to be exterior first and working on the exterior portion, and then while equipment's being ordered and design is being done for a chiller system, continue from that standpoint, and then we'll know from that standpoint, back to you, how to convey it correctly.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You bet.
Any other question or comment? We do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-59 passed six to zero.
Moving to nibble inside of Item Number Six. Councilmember Perez, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2017-65, so moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. Staff report?
The city contracts out for its basic maintenance cleaning services at our various office buildings. In large part, we do have some limited in-house crews, but this contract, we've been able to consolidate over time to deal with one vendor, and as shown, recommending awarding that to ANA, custom cleaning services.
Okay. Council, any question or comment on this particular item?
Just wanted to know if the applicant is here tonight. Yeah, I know, I know, I'm just glad, I just, I'm, it's always exciting to, funny to local vendors, so I was just being funny, but yeah, thanks.
I've been working late, rather late recently, trying to get proclamations and some other activity that I'm involved in, working, and I've been able to meet some of the staffing that is, the cleanup, clean staff, and I'm quite impressed with the individuals, and they, they even suggested I clean off my desk and stack it a little better. But they do, they do a good job, I appreciate that. Any question or comment from council at this point? Councilman Carbone?
I guess the one thing I'd like to say is, not only is this a local vendor, has done great performance, has come in behind, I guess, two other low bids and helped, pun intended, to clean up their mess, so, I mean, it's great not only to award it to a local company, but to have such a great service here in Verland.
Okay, any other question, comment? We do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-65 passed six to zero.
Moving to do business Item Seven. Dr. U, Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and Possible Action, First Reading of Ordinance Number 2000M-156, so moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor, and we did have a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had the March 31st meeting considered this particular issue, and there was a wide-ranging discussion on this issue, ranging from questions about regarding fencing around, detention down, the fencing around the facility, buffer spensing of walls, and after considerable questioning and discussion and expression of concern, the motion did pass by a vote of four to zero, and entered that into the proceedings tonight. And that's staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask Lotta to introduce this. This is a rezoning, so that's the, what's before you, but Lotta can describe that a little bit.
So, this is a request to rezone portions of a larger 16.8-acre parcel. This portion is currently zoned R1, and the applicant is proposing to, requesting a rezone to GB so that it's, the entire parcel is one GB zone, and that'll also allow the applicant to cohesively develop the entire parcel. The applicant currently has a purchaser who intends to construct an approximately 36,000 square-foot grocery store on the site, not on the port, on the area of the site that's being rezoned, but the rest of the site that's already GB zone. And this rezoning will help him, like I mentioned earlier, to design the entire site in a comprehensive manner. This parcel wants its zone gen, GB, the buffering, the parcel abuts residential zoning district, part of which is the school property and the city hall property, and the Unified Development Code will require a 30-foot buffer with the fence or a 25-foot landscape buffer with a masonry fence. The applicant is well aware of that and intends to meet that requirement when this parcel is developed. Staff recommends approval of the zone change for the following reasons. This R1 zone property is not in conformance with the future land use plan, which designates the parcel for retail and office and service uses, so the GB zone would be more in line with that future land use designation. As I mentioned before, this parcel, which is 5.9 acres, is part of a larger 16.8-acre parcel, of which the remaining area is already zoned GB. This parcel has frontage on Liberty Drive, a major collector, and is adjacent to non-residential uses, and therefore makes it more appropriate for commercial development. In fact, conversely, it makes its height, it makes the parcel highly improbable for single-family residential development that it's currently zoned for. And the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district will be compatible to existing commercial uses that have developed around the parcel. So, for those reasons, staff recommended approval, and as the mayor stated, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the zone change by a vote of four to two. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
I appreciate, appreciate that information. Although I have grave concerns about the traffic issue and other things, that is not the issue of the action item tonight. The action item is changing the zoning of the piece of property from what it is, which is residential, to something more compatible for other uses. So, we have to be very careful to hold our concerns about traffic and other issues when that particular item rises up as an action item on our future agenda, and we address that issue at that time. Any comments or questions about the zone change portion of this request today?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant here?
Yes, we are.
Oh, come up, please, and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Stephen Freeman. I'm with Kimley Horn. We're the civil engineer representing the applicant.
Is the owner here? Or is the engineer?
I don't believe the owner is here this evening.
What's that?
I don't believe the owner is here this evening.
So, I have a little bit of concern, because one of the things that we've discussed is that, you know, as a civil engineer, I don't think you're authorized to make a, speak on their behalf as to whether or not they're going to build that fence unless they've given you that authority already.
They have, sir.
Okay. So, what we would like, and I'd really rather hear it from them than their consultant, but something on the record that says that they will not take the election to have the increased buffer, the landscape buffer, and that they will build a fence to separate the school from the, from the commercial use.
Let me stop you, and that's not what we would like, that's what you would like. You keep saying "we," so that's not, that's not, that's not something I would like, so if that's something that you would like.
At least.
Fair enough, fair enough, that's great.
Yeah, fair enough. At least that's something that they discussed with me that they would be committed to. It's something that I would like to see. I discussed with other councilmembers that they've stated that that's what they would like to see, to have a separation, a walled separation between the commercial use and the, and the school.
Yes, sir. That was clear from the previous public hearing. That's important to the public and members of council. We've taken that into consideration, and I have been authorized to speak here on public record that an eight-foot-tall privacy barrier will be constructed between the school and this property.
I would say that at least the citizens reached out to me and stated that that's what they wanted to see as their representative, even though we can't tie this, as if it's a CUP, we can't tie this to those kind of conditions. Representing them, I feel like that's, that's what I would like to see them do. I would like y'all to be committed to that on the record. I think I feel more comfortable approving it now that y'all have made that statement on the record. Thank you.
I would, I would prefer on a personal basis that it would not be general business so much as office and professional, would be lower use on-site use of the property because of the potential issues that we're going to cover later in traffic and other things. General business opens it up for something a little more intense, and I would prefer there be something like office and professional, personally. Any other comment from council?
No, we're ready to vote.
Hmm? No other, did you have comments? Okay, we have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
And Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Orderance number 2000M-156 was adopted six to zero in its first reading.
Okay, moving to Item Number E on our, eight on our agenda. Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2017-45-.
dash four-five dash A. So moved.
Second.
Okay. The, uh, the, the members that are being appointed, uh, have been indicated in your, uh, council agenda, and, uh, the, the, the selection of the chair and the vice chair is, uh, comes from the, the mayor who does that selection for council appointees, for county, council committees. And I would recommend, um, uh, Councilmember Carbone as the chair, and Thomas Duncan, who is the vice president of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as our vice chair for this organization, and request that you can make that into the, pull that into the mission, uh, the motion.
So amended.
Then, I'd like to amend the motion to, uh, make Councilmember Carbone the chair and, uh, Thomas Duncan the vice chair of the CUP committee.
So moved.
We have.
Second.
Have motion second. We have, on, on, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilman, Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Amendment passed six to zero.
We have a motion and a second here, and agreed upon at this point, with the chair and the vice chair. Staff report on this item.
I'm sorry, are we still on eight, sir?
Yeah, on number eight, the, uh, selection of the conditional use permit.
So I thought we just voted on that. I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, this is some of the council set up. Uh, there was an organizing meeting. I identified members of the community to serve on that, and as you mentioned, I've had those and looking forward to starting that process.
Okay. If there's any question, comment on this item at this point?
I, I've got a comment, and I'll, I'll be honest. I, I, I hope this committee does good. From the comments we just heard, I don't hang much weight on that because we just said we wish we could do a CUP so we could require a business to do something. My view on this is a CUP is a conditional use, and I hope the committee understands that and says council approves a use, everything else, look to the UDC. I don't like what I've seen CUPs become, and I'll, I'll be honest, I view them as small planned developments, um, and that's not what I view their, their role to be in the city. Um, I, I hope, at least we do have some people that have dealt directly with land they own, that they've developed in the city and have dealt with CUPs. But, you know, it's, it's real easy when homeowners come up and say, we want XYZ. Let, let's be honest, they vote. Businesses don't. And it makes it real hard for a business at times, and I think the issue we just voted on is one of those. So I, I, I wish I could find some way to make the majority of the homeowners understand what government regulations do. But honestly, the average homeowner buys a house that the builder dealt with the regulations. They never deal with it directly, and it, it's real easy in those, in those ways to say, oh, this doesn't make that big of a deal. But it really does, and I, I want limited government. I believe making a CUP a truly conditional use permit is the way to do that, but I won't have a vote until it comes back.
I have one brief question. Will the, um, committee be reporting back, or will their times of meetings and minutes be published?
I presume so. I mean, it would be normal.
Think our chairman would be probably directing a lot of that.
Hosting the meeting.
Those meetings will not be posted per the open meeting time because it's, yeah, it's not required to.
Okay.
Okay. So will, how will we get, like, update from the meeting? Will minutes be posted?
I, I'm not sure who's going to be taking minutes of these meetings or anything. Uh, that hasn't been discussed. We haven't had an organizational meeting to discuss those types of issues.
I'm sure our chairman would probably, uh, Councilmember Carbone will probably call, uh, uh, brief us, identify.
That'd put you on, on the spot.
Maybe a memo or, or something, and I, I think we'll have probably some, knowing, knowing him as a certified public accountant, that he'll be very accurate in responding to us. As if every, every, as if every meeting is, uh, April the fifteenth. Which is income tax day. Any further question or comment on this item?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, I, no, you're good. So I, I just want to say, I'm, I appreciate you all meeting, and, and I like the, I like the, uh, the, the design to, to pull from a P and Z member, a past CUP applicant, developer and resident, and I think everyone that was chosen is good, and I'm glad they all were willing. My question is, just because I'm curious, is that in the packet it says that a member, so it's, it's, it's a singularity concept of a planning and zoning commission, past CUP applicant, developer, but I noticed we've got more, so it was just the idea just to get whoever we could, not just relegate it to just one member? I'm, not that it matters, I'm just, I don't know.
Well, the, the one, uh, the co-chair, who was, uh, uh, Mr. Duncan, is the, uh, if you will, rep from the P and Z, the sitting P and Z. So the rest of them, I think we've identified names for each of the other slots that are, that are there.
Okay.
Does that answer?
Yeah. So Russ Wilkins is the CUP applicant then. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. I think that's great. Um, it's going to be a good committee, hopefully.
Well, for the record, the, uh, committee is, is our first advisory ad hoc committee meeting regarding the review of conditional use permit requirements and related processes. The chairman is, uh, Councilmember Carbone. The vice chair is, uh, Thomas Duncan. We would also include, as members of the committee, Drew Pelter, Russ Wilkins, Alan Mueller, then, uh, Branson Danbury, Dansbury, and Heather Zayas. And, uh, which would be, and then of course, staff will always provide staff support for that as, as, as needed. So that is the new committee that, uh, we don't have very many council committees, and we do this on occasion, and, uh, this guided pretty well by our city charter and requirements. Any other comment from council? Mr. Mr. Ad hoc chairman, is there any, any?
No, sir.
I missed before we move.
No, sir.
Good. We do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
No.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash forty-five A was approved five to one.
Okay. All that information in the record. Let's move to item number nine. Uh, city attorney, Mr. Coker.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and council members. As you are aware, uh, more recently, we did some ethics, excuse, ethics training and went through the city's ethics ordinance with the city council on various issues, uh, from, uh, conflicts of interest to enforcement of the ordinance. And it was during that conversation that the council came to the conclusion that there were clearly adequate, adequate provisions of the city's ethics ordinance that addressed conflicts of interest, uh, whenever the city council takes action at a council meeting. So for matters to be considered before the council, there was, there were clear provisions with respect to how to handle those conflicts, whether it may be disclosure, abstaining from voting, uh, those types of issues, and not necessarily prohibiting a council from, a council member from participating in matters in certain instances. The concern of council that was raised was what do you do in instant, instances where possibly council members are not taking action at a meeting, but they're actually having to meet with staff, uh, and whether or not that the meeting with staff members in certain cases would or would not be appropriate. And so the direction at that time was let's look at the ordinance and come up with some various, various options that would be available to address, uh, that particular issue, specifically, uh, council me, council meetings outside, or excuse me, council meetings with staff outside of council meetings, and how do you handle that? I provided this information to the council, um, a few weeks ago, or several weeks ago, and then, um, also sought your feedback on that. I did get some feedback. Unfortunately, there, there was clearly not a consensus on that, and, uh, there were several options there. And, uh, and when we discussed this issue, even in our discussions, it was, it was very difficult, as you know, to come up with a consensus on how to handle this. And so the purpose of the meeting tonight is for the council to discuss these issues, and, and ultimately where we end up may not even be one of the ones that's on, on here, or it could be one of these options or a combination thereof, uh, that are modified according to our discussion this evening. But it's my hope that we can get some form of consensus, and if so, then we would come back to the council at the next council meeting, uh, with a proposed amendment to the ethics ordinance to implement whatever changes, uh, council seeks. And, uh, again, uh, the council's familiar with these five. I, and again, I'll just briefly run through these various options here, and I'll start with number one. I'll tell you right now, when we get to number four, option four, that is the, the one that is, uh, by far, uh, it's the one that is utilized by most cities, and I'll get to that one in just a minute and sort of explain why I believe that to be the case. Before I go through this, is, would the council like to, uh, I'm assuming the council would like to go through these, uh, each one at a time with a brief discussion, or would the council like to prefer to just open up the discussion now as it is?
We could just open up discussion now as is.
Okay. That's fine. Uh, Count from Hill. I'll start. So, um, I, uh, I know that there were some, some, um, disagreement, but differing opinions with regard to these five. My, uh, I, I think they're all good. Um, the only real issue I have is the, is item three, and that is the word or phrase, rather, or as a citizen. The purpose of the ethics ordinance was to prohibit and prevent, hopefully, council members that had a business interest from gaining in some respect. And so I think that, you know, it should be kept in there that if a council member in their professional course of business is required to meet with staff, but I don't know, I think it, it could be, it's confusing to have the language or as a citizen. Aside from that, um, that's really my only issue. And, and plus, it sort of conflicts with two when it states in two that it's expected that in the ordinary course of business and for their own benefit with respect to various city services, um, you know, that they're going to interact with staff. So I, I just think that that is, that should probably be taken out, in my opinion. Other than that, I have really any major. The provision of the ordinary course of business?
Yeah, I agree, because this whole ordinance doesn't have anything to do with citizens. It has to do with council members, so the word citizen is kind of misleading.
And three, and three.
And three, yeah.
Three, but in two, in two, yeah, they would be, of course, that last, that last part of that citizen.
Correct.
Okay. And I'll, I'll piggyback on that. I like all of them. I mean, I, honestly, if all we're going to do is, I think it's the last one, uh, there's no use in doing anything if all we're going to do is five, because that just summarizes what the people said decades ago when they passed the charter. So we, I, I guess that would allow us to pat us on ourselves on the back and say we did something, but, um, but I like all five of them together as a whole, um, and I think it makes this body the most transparent that, that we can be, and I think that's what people want in government.
I just want to start off, but we've had some neighboring cities that have had some, some significant issues, uh, dealing with each other, uh, dealing with, um, what we would call ethical issues, and I, I want to commend that our council is in discussion. My concern primarily on this is that we don't create a classification of people who cannot run for council, uh, and that we do have people who are local business owners that are highly localized. Uh, example I've used is plumbers, general contractors, they're, they're going to work in and out of the city. Uh, by virtue of what they do, they have to interact with staff. Now, there would be, in my opinion, some, some difficulty in running both of those, but I don't think that we want to create an ordinance that prevents them from running. They want to make, um, if they want to make those, um, those sacrifices on their own, I think that's what they shoot, that's what I've chosen to do. I've chosen to not do work in Pearland, other than the projects that I was already committed to. You know, I wrote a letter, sent it to staff, saying these are the projects that I, I may have interaction with, that I was already under contract with, but I've chosen not to turn, take any projects in Pearland. But I would hate to tell somebody who owns a local business, plumbing business, uh, that is localized to say, look, because of the way we've written this ordinance, you don't have the ability, um, to interact with staff, or we're going to limit you the practical nature of how you interact with staff. I like the idea of three. I don't know if I like the seventy-two hour provision where you've basically got, say, a plumber needs to, uh, needs to meet on a, um, on a concern they have with, uh, with one of the permits they've applied to. They've got a three-day wait before they can even meet. But other than that, I mean, there's, there's a few of them, as either or. I think they're a little, like, five, just a little too broad, and basically it says, let's just adhere to the, uh, uh, let's adhere to the, um, to the charter as is. I like four. I like three, but with that modification, um, I don't know if we can practically do all, all five of them. I think because in certain areas, they're, I wouldn't say they're in conflict, but they don't really work in concert, but, um.
So first off, let me say, let me say thank you for doing what you do and deciding not to put yourself in any situation that may be construed that way by not doing work in Pearland. So that's honorable of you, so thank you. But the seventy-two hour, for, the seventy-two hours prior to, uh, a meeting, that is currently in the charter, and that's not a change that we're making. That's something that was already there, correct?
No, that, that actually is not. Uh, the, the only seventy-two hour, um, issue that applies to council, of course, is the notice that, for our public meetings here, uh, under the Texas Open Meetings Act. Uh, there is nothing in the charter with respect to filing a notice of any meetings, or even in our current, uh, ethics ordinance. There is a disclosure of conflicts, but there's no time related to that, like the seventy-two hour timeframe that you're referencing here. So, um, I understand, uh, the concerns raised by Councilmember Perez, and, and obviously, if, if that's a concern of council, uh, then, uh, another option there would be to not necessarily have a seventy-two hour notice provision of such a meeting, but just that the, a meeting of that, uh, a notice of such a meeting be filed with the city secretary as it's stated here, but that the meeting not occur until that's been filed with the city secretary. And of course, once it's filed with city secretary, notice of that meeting could then be immediately provided to the city council, a copy of that notice.
There, we're sort of shooting from all five sections here. Should, should we take them one section at a time and?
Well, and if you, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'll just sort of.
Why don't you just take one section at a time, let's, let's clear it, and then go on section two?
Well, well.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I personally don't have a problem with any of it the way that it stands as of now, as, with the exception of what Councilman Hill and I talked about earlier. Um, I, I would open that up for anybody else, but I don't think we need to go by section by section, do we?
Yeah, I, I don't think so either. Plus, some of these, um, is, is, some of these kind of contradict each other. Specifically, number one is, is broad to the point where two and three get more, well, two and four get more specific. You know, I, I, I think if we adopt, if we adopted two through four, you'd almost have to, um, maybe get rid of or change the language in number one. Uh, and if you, I don't know if you see what I'm saying. I can go through it.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I'll just go ahead and elaborate on that just a little bit more. First of all, number one is meant to be read in conjunction with number two. If you'll read, uh, the, the second half of number one, it says, "Nor shall any council member use or attempt to use their authority or influence, perceived or otherwise, for the purpose of engaging in prohibited conduct." Well, number one does not define prohibited conduct. So in order for number one to even be in there, you have to have something that defines prohibited conduct. That's, that then transitions to number two.
But actually, number one actually is in the charter. It says, as a councilman, it, it should not issue action item orders to staff to perform duties. That, if there's something that needs to be done, go to the city manager and says, direct your attention to the city manager.
It is indirectly in the charter, but what this does is try to clarify and define, and, and the, the issue here is that the charter is not a document that can be enforced against. And the issue here is that the charter is not a document that can be enforced against the council's ordinance.
It's not, it's not ethics, but it is in the charter that says that we should not go and instruct Trent Epperson over there to go do something. It needs to be done, city manager can tell him that.
So number two tries to define prohibited conduct. And that prohibited conduct is the use of one's status as a council member to meet with and potentially influence the decision of a staff member to the private advantage of oneself, a family relationship, as defined in the Local Government Code, Chapter 176. And that's when we talked last time about the relationships of consanguinity or affinity into the second or third degree, depending on which one of those you're talking about. Such conduct also includes attempts to meet with staff on matters that reach beyond the scope of activities for which council members normally engage on behalf of themselves or their constituents in the discharge of their duties. Based on our discussions here, it really would sort of stop there, because the rest of that would come out.
Or just take out "in the ordinary course of business," because I think it is expected that if you're dealing with your own water bill, then, you know, if that's what the intent was there, I'm not sure.
So you're just saying just take out "in the ordinary course of business"?
Yeah.
For their own benefit?
I mean, it's expected, as it says here, the language, "for their own benefit," that would, to me, be fine. I would take out "ordinary course of business," clean that up, and then take out in number three, "or as a citizen," to clean that up. And then I think the rest is probably fine. I will comment if you were, are you, are you good? Are you done?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Is that, is that, I don't know that this necessarily prohibits anybody from running from council. I think it just puts some restrictions with regard to what they do when they get on council, if they're successfully elected. I think it just means that they're gonna have to file a written disclosure. I mean, if you recall, back when I first came on six years ago, there wasn't anything, it was the Wild West. And so I could have just gone down to the courthouse and started defending people in municipal court, where the judge reports to me. So the idea, when it first started, was to prohibit lawyers from doing that, and then it sort of grew from there. And so, you know, you make choices when you run for office that you're conflicted out. I'm running for judge, and I'm not gonna be able to practice law anymore. And if I'm not okay with that, then I shouldn't run for judge. So I think that, to some extent, this doesn't prohibit people from running, it just means they're gonna have some extra measures. And so I'm okay with these.
That's exactly what I was getting ready to say. That's my next comment. No one is prohibited from running. I mean, and, you know, I think the thought is that you give up what you, you know, whatever it is, business-wise, that you may not be able to do under these guidelines. And so specifically with the 72-hour provision, you know, I think we need to have some type of hour limitation. If something comes up where it's a special circumstance, you know, at the end of the day, then, you know, I think that can be looked at and handled. But I don't see a situation where a council member, you know, misses the 72-hour deadline, and it's 48 hours, and, you know, we're like, "Oh, well, you violated this provision." You know, so I think some type of guideline needs to be there. I don't see anything wrong with 72 hours. As far as number five, and Councilmember Orno mentioned it, you know, it's already in the city charter. But like you said, the city charter is not enforceable by a council. And so it might be good to just go ahead and just put it there, you know, to put it in. But overall, I like everything that we've discussed with whatever changes. And thanks for clarifying, you know, one is actually leading into two. So that's all I have for now.
And if I could add a little bit, something more to that. The way I see it, and whenever I provided this counsel, I'd said originally, I said, "These can be read in conjunction with one another, or they can be read individually." If they, if we do that, we may have to go back and tweak them accordingly. And so just to recap what we were just talking about, if one is sort of the opening, sort of preamble almost, two is defining more what the prohibited conduct is. And two is very strict, because it really almost prohibits such a meeting. Then what three is, is three is really more the exception to the general prohibition in two. Because what three does is it says, "Here's where you can meet." And so Councilmember Perez, his concern that he raised, this is where, okay, it's not gonna prohibit that person from running for council, because they're not gonna be able to do business with the city. It's just what it's doing is it's adding a layer of disclosure that currently does not exist and creates more transparency. And I guess right now, Councilmember Reed just brought up the issue of the timing. And if I could get some clarification on that, so that when we do come back with an amendment, right now, I just wrote in 72 hours. If that seems unreasonable, and the council says 24 hours, whatever you think can be reasonable would help to give me some guidance on that issue.
If you want that, you want that now, or you want to go through it?
And.
If I can, if I can add some of my thoughts around that 72 hours, I guess, what is the purpose of that notice? If Councilman Hill, before he's elected to judge, wants to go meet, he provides a notice. 72 hours for what? For us to rally to somehow stop him from having a meeting? I mean, really, all I care about is being put on notice. That way, I can follow up with the city manager or with Councilman Hill directly and say, "What's going on? My concerns are he's trying to do something," or whatever. So I don't, I agree that that 72 hours seems a little, I mean, that can be a long three days.
I agree.
And I don't know what the purpose is. As long as I'm put on notice that he's going to meet with him, I don't care if I get an email and he's meeting with him at the same time. As long as I'm aware that that's happening, I'm comfortable with it, and I can deal with it, either with the city manager or in an open meeting.
I agree, and your solution would fix that.
The solution I talked about was that if you do feel that's an onerous provision, then simply you could require that the notice be provided to the city secretary's office prior to such a meeting, and that the council be copied on that notice.
Well, you just said, you just stated that one of the reasons, or that you would want to be able to call the city manager or follow up with whomever. I mean, if it's at the exact same time, what time period would you have to actually follow up? I mean.
Well, I don't think that I, as a councilman, could stop that meeting, nor would I want to. I'm just, I'm, I can, I'll follow up afterwards to see what occurred. But the 72 hours makes me feel like I've got three days that I can try to scramble to stop Greg from having that meeting. I don't think that's right. I think he should be allowed to have that meeting once we're put on notice.
I, and this is just my assumption, I'm assuming the 72 hours was taken off public meeting. I think the reason that 72 hours is there is 72 hours is the only timeframe that guarantees you one business day. Because if it's Friday, then that, you know, gives you. So I personally would like to, or recommend we change it to one business day, because I would like to know that before the meeting happens. But I don't need to know three days before the meeting happens. I think one business day would suffice.
And I agree with that. I don't see any harm in the 72 hours. I mean, it's not like you're putting somebody under a gun. And like I just said, you know, at the end of the day, if for some reason somebody comes in with 48 hours, or at this point, one business day, you know, we're not gonna say, "Oh, you know, well, he didn't," you know, or "That person didn't do what they were supposed to do," you know.
Well, as an attorney, you could, and you would.
No, I, 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 no. I'm not the attorney for the city, so I mean, I, I, look, you know, we're, I think initially, when Councilmember Hill put in an ethics clause, when we'd never had one before, when, you know, previous council members that were in, that are in this room now, it was to police ourselves. And in fact, he put in something to police himself, and it made sense. You know, we've had, we had a, we've had a situation where we felt like this is something that needed to be discussed. And, you know, and I think this dialogue is good, but I don't see any harm in the one business day, or, you know, just letting us know beforehand. I'd like to know personally beforehand that this meeting or whatever is gonna occur. You know, I knew beforehand with the meeting that did occur. And so, you know, I'd like to know beforehand that these types of things are going on, and be able to talk to Clay, or talk to, you know, John, or Trent, you know, whomever, about, you know, "Hey, look, what's this meeting about?" And not really go to the council member, the council member's gonna, you know, well, I'd rather be able to talk to staff as well.
Councilman, I think the 72 hours is chosen because that's the amount of time we have to use for posting our agendas. And it's kind of an accepted timeframe. And it can be a week, or it can be over the weekends, and in most of our cases. I think it's more of a generally accepted timeframe for actions with cities because of the posting issues and stuff like that.
Would everybody be okay with one business day?
I think it's a good compromise, yeah.
Okay, can we do one business day in there, Mr. Coker?
I'll have to research that. No. I think it.
So it wouldn't be 24 hours, because we wanted, so that way if it was Friday, then it could be Monday.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it gives us, what we're trying to encourage and influence is transparency in all our dealings. And I think the, I think the one business day is a good compromise. It's not too onerous. I can't imagine you get so many emergencies that if it doesn't get solved in an hour, the whole thing's gonna fall apart. I like the idea of four. If we eliminate two, leave three, and keep four, again, and this is something Gary and I, I think, gravitate to, is adhering to the chain of command, adhering to the city manager. It's his job to manage his staff, and we shouldn't be interfering with his ability to do that. So if ever there is an issue that you must, must deal with staff, that you have to go through the city manager first. So he's aware of the meeting, he's aware of anything that's discussed in the meeting. He has an opportunity to attend the meeting, as opposed to reaching out to, if I had a, somebody, or if I was doing a drainage project that was ancillaryly connected to Pearland, I didn't just go straight to the engineer and say, "Here's what we're planning on doing, do you agree with that?" I think that's, keeping four, I think, is necessary.
If I could clarify then, because you just mentioned, you know, maybe dropping two. And the way I had read these was that one establishes sort of the expectation of the prohibited conduct. Two was the strict application of that rule. Three is sort of the exception to where it would still be allowed for a council member. So it's my understanding, based on the discussion so far, that we would keep those three. And some, this is obviously gonna have to be wordsmithed. But, and then number four could still be, I think, provided in there, because then that still means if we're gonna go through this process, and that such a meeting is gonna occur, that the city manager would be notified to maintain the hierarchical structure, and which would be consistent with the charter.
Yep.
And just for the record, what are the, you've talked about, not punishment in the right word, but what are the teeth in this?
The teeth, because this will become part of the ethics ordinance. It goes back to sort of the enforcement provisions of the ethics ordinance. If there is a complaint under the ethics ordinance, then there's a, there's the process that you go through in that ordinance, which would involve making a formal complaint, it's filed, then the individual has a chance to respond to that. There's also, there's actually a hearing process that would be gone through if there's an actual allegation that there's been a violation. In this particular case, well, for all violations under the ethics ordinance, the teeth is, I wouldn't call them teeth, because what it really amounts to is public censor-type punishments.
And I just wanted to get it on the record, that we're not saying a council member does one of this. We don't have the power to remove anybody off this body.
That is correct.
So just to be clear, we're adopting all of them, but just those changes that it seemed like there was at least three or four that were.
Correct, and then adjusting sort of the structure of them to where they flow together better.
You know, as I stated before, it is, it's a reiteration of the charter, but I mean, it's, the charter's not, quote-unquote, enforceable. But at the end of the day, I mean, like you just said, Councilmember Orno just said, "We can't kick anybody off of this."
Yeah. Let me, let me just bring up one thing just for consideration. Do we want to, do we want to modify two to where instead of private advantage to oneself, we limit it to financial advantage? I don't, I just don't know what would constitute, and maybe I'm missing it within Chapter 176.
Yeah, and I've had, I've had discussions about this, as whether a private advantage constitutes necessarily. Is it always gonna be an economic advantage? And it won't necessarily always be.
Correct.
And let's just, as a hypothetical, somebody comes in and a friend of a council member comes in and says, "Hey, I'm getting ready to develop 50 acres. Unfortunately, I'm gonna have to get a variance."
I think in general, most of the council members would recognize the inappropriate actions that we would take, like interfering with staff or some of the other actions. But a reasonable council member would do that, I think. Very few of us were surprised by, I didn't know the ethics ordinance said that. We probably would not have done it if we'd been the right type of.
Right.
Approach and, and, the ethics, ethics as members of the city council, elected officials would, ought to ride with that.
Essentially, if somebody were requesting a variance, needed to go through a variance process, and that individual went to a council member and said, "Hey, we, this, I really don't want to go, I don't want to risk going through the variance process and may not get approved. Could you meet with head of planning? Talk to them, maybe try to see if you can get them to back off their stance." That would be an example of somebody doing something. There's not necessarily a financial gain behind it for anybody, but that would be an example of somebody running interference with a staff member. But it was, it was a private game, but not necessarily a financial game. And so that is one example. Something I do want to say, as I looked in this, I looked at a bunch of other cities, I looked at their ethics ordinances. And the one thing I, as I was doing it, I was reflecting back. And the one thing that we've been very fortunate here in Pearland is that we have council members who, one, work together and get along. And it's always been very nice to have that circumstance. We have cities with ethics ordinances, and they'll have 15, 20 ethics complaints filed. None of them upheld, but it becomes a tool and a weapon used to be divisive. And so that's something we always, I caution, ethics ordinances are great, as long as they're used properly. And so I just want to, want to encourage you as council member, because while you may have your disagreements at the DICE, y'all always do a very good job of acting professional and courteous with one another, and also respecting each other. And there's a lot of trust between you, and so that's always fostered a good environment here. And so just from a staff perspective, I think, I'd like to thank you for that. And just wanted to share those final comments. And I'll be able to make these changes and bring this back to the council. If you're, if you would like, I can have that brought back for the April 24th council meeting.
I'd like to suggest one addition, if it's possible. You know, with a lot of, a lot of professional organizations, you're required to do some sort of ethical training on a yearly basis. Can we add something in the ordinance to allow for this, either through exec session or even an open council, there be a quick overview every year of this ethical ordinance, so that no council member can say that they are unaware?
That could be added to this. I believe we now, through, we have another, maybe it's not in the council procedures, but I believe there's something else. But we will annually do this for, especially for new council members as they come on here in the month of May, and possibly, or in the month of possibly June, with potential for runoffs. But as we get into that, all new council members will go through that. And I obviously am willing to do annual training on an annual basis for council as a body, if that's necessary.
I think that would be good.
So, and not to beat a dead horse, but on that example you gave with private advantage, and then just the thought we were just speaking of, if you had, if it was only, if it was only necessary for one council member to file a complaint against another council member, do we need to do something to make it to where in the future, if you get council, if you got one guy that doesn't like another guy, or girl, or whatever, and then they file some complaint when this person maybe is acting on behalf of a constituent in that example? It's a slippery slope, because now there's no pecuniary interest, and that's really, now we're getting away from the original scope of the ethics ordinance, that it's just, so what, is that something that we need to anticipate?
And you're right, because currently, the ethics ordinance, of course, it focuses on the items that you take action on, whether or not you had a conflict, and then failed to disclose that, and then took action on it. And this is now going down a different path, obviously. And if you would like it tied to a pecuniary interest, we can do that.
It seems to me like we would probably need to, because otherwise, what if you are acting on behalf of a constituent and you. are acting on behalf of a constituent and you go through the proper chain of command, you've got no pecuniary interest, and I'm just thinking in the future if some council member that gets elected, I mean, whoever, I'm not thinking of anyone in particular, and then if you have one council member that doesn't like that particular council member and files a complaint, then it just seems like, then it could get kind of ugly, unless we require more than one council member to file a complaint.
That example plays out, if, let's say the council member goes to that planning department, individual, and simply asks the question, will this individual need a variance for this? Yeah, they're going to need a variance, and there's why, okay, I just needed to know, I'm going to go back and tell them that they're definitely going to need a variance. Somebody could always make an allegation, hey, you went to the staff member and you did something that may or may not be true.
Yeah, I think we need to be careful, I think there needs to be some pecuniary.
And I like the, well, I like the idea of making it to, I, I could even possibly live with three council members to bring it in with seven, I'll, I'll be honest, I don't like our deal we do at the end of every meeting now where one council member can basically put something on the agenda, if you can't get at least two of us to talk about it, you're not going to get it passed, so you're kind of wasting everybody's time. So, I, I would be okay, because I, I would rather, instead of change the wording, I would rather change it to have, to have multiple member, council members file the grievance.
Two or three, or a majority?
Not a majority.
Three? Three of seven? I, I, I mean, I agree, you, you don't want it to, you don't want the ordinance to be weaponized against, and, so I think, you know, I think three, three or four of, of the seven, I don't think, three, I think, I'm fine with three, but do we want to do both where it's, it has to be clarified as pecuniary and have three?
I, I would suggest that it be no more than three, because then you're, you're really getting a quorum of council to sign off on something that would be presented to council, and so in essence you've inadvertently and not intentionally violated the Open Meetings Act, so.
Let's, let's talk afterwards, let's talk afterwards about that, with that ruling out of Montgomery County with the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Darren, I think we've prepared a net that's going to catch all the bad guys. Appreciate the work that you've done, appreciate the council.
Yeah, and thank you for our, our long conversations that we had over this.
That's okay. I think we're going to get there.
We could always revisit this, moving in our agenda, item number seven, mayor council issues for future council agendas, Councilman Garbone Reed.
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, I'd like to add a discussion about the sidewalk program.
About what?
The sidewalk program, the payment in lieu of.
All right.
To a future council meeting.
Any other?
I think Councilmember Moore had mentioned it last week, but, and I'm assuming that the, the Lakes of Savannah issue is going to be on our next agenda.
Well, I talked to Member Moore, we're going to bring back a City Gate port and wrap up something in there, so we've been working on this for several months, we've actually got a last draft, I'll shoot to you, so, long way of saying yes, in some fashion.
Okay, and with respect to the, the young ladies that came up to talk about Southgate, or, yeah, Southgate, the lighting, you know, I don't know that it needs to be an agenda item, they also asked about cameras, but, I don't know, was this their first time reaching out to the city with regards to that park, I don't know if that's something that Chris can address, or?
Yeah, we, well, we sent out some stuff late this afternoon and documented what we limited stuff we had, gotten, we've had some contacts, and there's some things we're working on, so, let me take a look at that.
With lighting?
Lighting's going to happen, we're going to order that up, that's an easy one, at the end of the cul-de-sac there to the park, so.
With cameras though, we don't do that in other public.
We haven't, and, and I'd suggest, we've got other areas, if we're going to do, start that, we'd probably do for larger neighborhood parks, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, moving in our agenda to item number seven, council, we've done that, executive session under Texas Government Code, section 551.074, personnel matters regarding the approval of a police chief appointment, obviously in executive session we can discuss this with our staff and individuals in executive, but we cannot make a decision in executive session, but we do have item one, item number 10 indicated on our agenda for a decision upon return